This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting for October 27th, 2020. And please take note that the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District, in response to the continuing pandemic emergency, circumstances caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and consistent with the New York State Governor's executive orders, we are conducting our scheduled public meeting this evening at 7:00 PM and held via Zoom and the Zoom webinar through our website. In a moment, we will offer the opportunity for public comment during our public participation section. Any members of the public who are listening in on the webinar are welcome and who desire to make a comment to the board, either ask a question or make a statement are welcome to do so. We ask that you go to the chat feature and sign in with your name and your address, and we will call on you in a moment during that portion of the public participation meeting. We also remind everyone that comments, questions, inquiries of any kind can be sent to the board at any point in time. You can send them by email directly to me as Board President or to the entire board, or directly to Dr. McGowan or to our district and Board Clerk Kim Lanza fame if you prefer. All email addresses as well as all of our phone numbers and our other contact information, those are all listed on the website. So members of the public are welcome to comment and participate in multiple ways, not just at a board meeting. So again, now, first up, we will this evening offer the opportunity for public participation. Dr. McGowan, do we have anyone signed up to comment this evening?
We do not.
Okay, then we will move on then to the remainder of our agenda in our meeting. Board members, please, a motion for approval of the agenda for this evening?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Sue and seconded by Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we are seven in favor and none opposed. Motion, please, for approval of minutes from the October 13th, 2020 Board of Education meeting?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Karen. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, deletions to those minutes? I'm hearing none, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, that is, motion is carried, seven in favor and none opposed. This being a business meeting, we have our section of our reports this evening. Starting those off would be our principal reports. Will we begin with Council Rock and Principal Matt Tappan?
Hi, Dr. McGowan, are you giving me permission to share or are you sharing my presentation? You're muted. Oh, sorry.
You are absolutely going to share. Hold on one second. Go right ahead, Mr. Tappan.
All right. All right, so good evening to everyone. It is hard to believe we are ending October in a few days. So this is our new Council Rock sign that is out front. You can see the doors in the background. So thanks to Eric Gruner for snapping that photo today. Just things continue to kind of get finished up in the areas that are done and then a lot more work is still happening in the closed area. So so this month, we have spent a lot of time not only getting to know our students and who they are, but also who they are as learners. So we did give the MAP test, which is Measures of Academic Progress, to all of our first and second graders. Our hybrid students are wrapping that up right now, and then our remote students will be starting that tomorrow. It's been interesting. This is an assessment that we've given. It's all on the iPad. Students, it adjusts to students as they answer questions. It is in both reading and in math. We do give the K2 version, which reads a lot of things to them, is very developmentally appropriate. But as you can imagine, giving it in the remote setting presents a whole bunch of challenges. So we are thankful to Jill Milliman, who works out of central office and has offered us support. And I am always thankful to Marin Jeffries, our Assistant Principal, who helps with this as well. But it gives us really good information about where our students are, what they know, and then gives us what steps we need to take next to teach them. And I think that's more important now than ever in terms of getting to know our students quickly and using that data. So this is a display that Nicole Yearleys and Ashley Youngman actually did. On one of our temporary walls, they prettyed it up for me. But based on the book, The Colors of Us by Karen Katz, this was an activity where students took and figured out the shades of their skin and really looked to celebrate diversity, but also what is this, what is unique about each of us, but also what is the same about us and made this beautiful display. Several other second grade classrooms also did something with this book in terms of celebrating diversity as we've continued to try to bring diverse texts to our students as well as different perspectives. So thanks to Nicole and Ashley for creating this beautiful display that their students actually created. So we are in the middle of Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week again is a little bit different this year. It falls on Halloween week, which is seems to just be stretched out this year because we only have students, some of them on Thursday and some of them on Friday. We will be celebrating Halloween both days with costumes, no parade, but costumes. But Red Ribbon Week celebrates healthy choices as well as kindness, which is our focus. So we wore red yesterday, silly socks today and tomorrow. From the remote setting, we will celebrate Brighton believes in healthy choices, wearing our Brighton gear or our school colors. So students participated at school, but they also participated from home, sending in pictures, and we will have lots of pictures to share that Eric Gruner is going to put together for us in a slideshow. So Halloween and fall themed work abound as I walk around the building. Just a lot of different, really creative ways to use fall and different Halloween kind of lots of monsters this year. A lot of different monster use, a couple really popular books, but using it in writing, responding to writing, using it in math. So just really great to see our halls filled again with student work and students. So I don't know if you know this, but on Wednesday, so I start every morning on seesaw with a video morning announcements for anyone who is maybe not at school doing the pledges and just introducing the day. But on Wednesday, when everyone is at home, I've continued with the, I guess it's a tradition that started in March, my read alouds. And I share a read aloud with all the students. This month, we focused on kindness. And so every Wednesday, that's how kids get to start their days at home. And I love it. I hope they continue to love it. Oh, no, I don't need to start it. Sorry. So these were nature creations that were inspired again, Mrs. Yearleys. It seems like she's making lots of appearances here, but there are other classrooms that did this as well. Inspired by a Japanese artist who takes nature clippings and then creates these insects. And these were incredible designs that kids did. I just saw them and Mrs. Jeffries actually emailed me the pictures and they just, they, they're stunning to me. They're so beautiful and just trying to connect that outside world back into the classroom as much as we can. So a huge thank you to the BEF. We did get a grant as we entered late into the, you know, the recess season, not knowing whether we're going to be able to do recess and then coming up with. So as you can see, these mesh bags, what the grant provided was for every classroom, it provides two mesh bags, each with the same equipment. There's a basketball, a bouncing ball, some jump ropes and a football and a frisbee for students to use. And the reason we have two is that we have a bag for our Monday and Thursday cohort and then a bag for Tuesday and Friday cohort. After the students play with it on Monday, it quarantines and doesn't get played with until they come back on Thursday, and the two don't mix. So it just is a creative way that we are looking to be able to have the kids have lots of materials and equipment to play with out outside. Again, we are still without a full recess playground, and that will be coming in our final phase and be ready to open in September. But it is great to be able to get outside and it really has been an amazing fall and we're very thankful for it. If it rained, it rained mostly on a Wednesday, which was lucky for us. And we were able to get out almost all the days until it kind of turned a little bit colder and rainy this last week. So special thanks to the BEF for providing us that grant. So we have lots of new routines and as I walk around, the kids are great with these new routines. So greetings and goodbyes, they've always been something that we did, you know, high fives and hugs or just a goodbye. So they've come up with so many creative ways to do that, air hugs, the tiny wave. You can do a bow, you can do an elbow. And this is Mrs. Banbury and Mrs. Linton's class who have created their own hands that was connected to the project in The Colors of Us. So they did the same kind of thing, but they created these hands and then they used them in their morning circles to actually give the virtual high fives. And they're using it to make sure that kids know each other's names and that they're connected in the community. So just another really creative way of getting around some of our regulations. Another new routine is we are very typically with our remote classes, doing material pickups on Wednesdays when it is quieter in the building because there are no other students. Students' families are coming through and our security is helping to, in a drive by kind of way, get the materials they need. Usually we've been doing it every other week for those classes and they're getting paper materials. The art teacher has been providing any materials they may be needing for at home learning. But you know, I've gotten a couple of comments that it's like a little present every time they get at home and the students get really excited about what's going to come from their teacher. So another routine that we didn't think we had, we're going to have, but we certainly do now. Upcoming events tomorrow, Council Rock has its virtual town halls with Dr. McGowan and myself. 5:30 is for kindergarten and then at 6 o'clock kindergarten through second grade will join us. As I said, Thursday and Friday, we will be doing Halloween celebrations in our classrooms. And costumes are allowed. Teachers will have communicated other expectations. And just a reminder that November 11th, there is no school for Veterans Day. And then we've moved our conferences and the first one, they've gone from the Fridays to the Wednesdays. And our first one is November 18th and it's a first half day. We'll be communicating a little bit more about what that schedule will look like and teachers will be connecting with you to hopefully sign you up for a virtual conference so that we can let you know how things are going at school. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Matt. It looks great. And I mean, I don't think, I think we all need more virtual hugs, but the virtual hugs and the long hands for high fives are tremendous. So thank you so much.
That actually gave me a moment though, where I thought, I can't wait to go back to Council Rock. I get to go back to Council Rock.
Yay. It's a super school. Moving right along and we're going to hear from another great school in French Roads report and Principal Allison Rio.
Hello, everyone. Hope you're having a great night. Thanks, Matt, for that great update. I had many different things in my report, but as usual, I felt like a lot of the things that you had in there, we could have shared as well, which I think is awesome. So just some updates from friends. I put a quote in here because as I started putting this together, it made me kind of think like all of these things that we prepared for and have been working so hard to organize for the opening day and the first months of school, but now we're kind of just moving on. We keep moving on. Our kids are moving on. They're still learning and doing great things at school, although it looks different. And that was kind of my theme as I put this together. This is a picture of our PE department here at French Road and Crystal Forsythe led this for our team. But we've put together some equipment bags for our remote families, which have been really great because they have what they need at home to participate in PE lessons. And that was kind of a learned experience as we started off. And I watched some of Crystal's lessons where she did an awesome job of teaching some soccer skills with a stuffed animal or a balloon or a pillow or soccer ball, kind of whatever you had at home. And then kind of came up with the idea like, hey, let's get things out to people if they need it. So we have over 50 families that have signed up to rent these bags of equipment to take home with them. And I'm really proud of our PE teachers for thinking about things a little bit different for our kids. And we have our French Road kids back in their art rooms. So our art rooms were remodeled over the summer and they weren't quite ready at the start of the school year. And being safe, we had art in the classroom to start off the year. But our teachers have done such a phenomenal job of organizing the art rooms to bring the kids back, keeping them safe, having different rotations of kids coming in with cleaning. And the kids have loved being back in the art rooms. It's nice to be able to get up and go to a different space during the day as needed and have their art supplies. They bring them along with them, all individual that they use, but it's really great to see them in that space. And the art teachers are doing a great job with that. It's really just wonderful to see it in use now. And something else I have to brag on for a bit is our instrumental music lessons. Our IM team has been phenomenal, starting with their work over the summer. Once they heard that we were going into this hybrid and remote model, just right away started planning and thinking about how to make this work best for kids. And even for our fourth graders who would be starting off with a instrument if they, if they chose to this year, they came up with some great ideas, including creating a video over the summer to show the kids what the instruments were and letting them, you know, decide what they wanted to do and organizing the groups and working around their schedules, whether they are remote or hybrid. And I've popped into many instrumental music lessons now and it's been pretty awesome. So it almost feels like they're sitting right there with me at French Road, except they're all muted. But they're, you know, their ability to play little pieces for us and listen to their teachers and participate has been great. And this is a group of kids who was on their home learning day, participating from home. So really awesome that they could do that and that's going really well. So I had to brag on them a little bit. And also our teachers are continuing on their work. You know, just as I kind of mentioned at the beginning, we just keep going, we keep riding along and teachers are working very hard to adapt what we already do and what we, the units we have in place to keep that learning continuous and consistent for kids. So our fourth grade team, for example, always works on their personal narrative in the fall, and that is consistent across every classroom, whether you're a hybrid student or a remote student. And so much of their work has been transferred into seesaw as needed and videos have been shared for kids. And I'm just so proud of the work that they've been doing because our kids are doing just what they were doing last year at this time. And it's been great to see, now, if I'm in a remote class, hybrid class, it doesn't matter. We are still working on that work together. And then our fifth grade, I talked a little bit about this, but earlier in the year, but we have two new units or revised units at the fifth grade. Teachers worked on over the summer and last school year as well. And one of them is overcoming challenges and the other unit is why should human rights issues be part of our conversations as global citizens? And these are some of the books that they've substituted into the work that they're doing at French Road with our fifth graders. And right now, many of our kids are reading a book called, well, the whole grade level reads Harbor Me and then can break out into small groups as they talk about challenges. And the books we've picked have different themes, some similar to ones in the past, but all newer literature, diverse literature, different characters and connecting to things that kids are experiencing right now and feeling right now. And it's been pretty great watching the kids go through these similar class. And I can't wait to hear how it turns out. And thanks to a BEF grant for French Road, we have some vinyl quotes going up in all of our bathroom stalls around the school. It's a slow process because I guess I never knew how hard it was to put up a vinyl quote on the wall that's really big. And there was Ms. O'Neill putting one up for us, but we've been kind of slowly chipping away at this for our kids. And the bathrooms are just another place where kids can feel, read a positive note and kind of internalize that as they're at school. It's been great to see them. We have them in all of the bathrooms in the third grade, working our way through the fourth grade and the fifth grade right now. So in the next few weeks, they'll all be up for kids. So thank you for the grant from BEF. And tomorrow night at French Road, we are doing a Brighton the Night Drive Thru Lit Up Carved Pumpkin Night. So I'm not exactly sure how many pumpkins we'll get, but we know, we hear lots of kids are bringing their pumpkins into French Road and we'll light them up tomorrow night, starting at 7:00 PM. And anyone can, not just French Road, anyone who wants to can just take a little loop through the Front Road bus loop and enjoy some carved lit up pumpkins for fall spirit. And we hope to get lots of kids to bring in pumpkins tomorrow. Some upcoming events, we have our Brighton the Night, as I talked about, Halloween celebrations for two days with our hybrid learners. And much is going on throughout this week, actually, for remote learners, as I've seen already. And we have a virtual town hall at French Road on Thursday this week at 6:00 PM. And no school for Veterans Day, as Mr. Tappin mentioned. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Allison. We appreciate that. Good luck tomorrow night. And I think tomorrow is supposed to be a relatively dry day, so the pumpkin drive through should work out really well. So thanks for sharing that out again. We appreciate it. And we'll move over to 12 Corners Middle School and Principal Jim Nunez. Jim, you're muted still.
Well, thank you for that, Mark, and thank you for all of those updates there, Allison, from French Road there. For me, it was quite funny when I saw there, Mr. La Paglia in his phys ed class. Threw me back to 1989 when he was my wrestling coach in high school and I saw him in that same jersey. So I'm glad things haven't changed and it doesn't seem like he's aged much either. So things at 12 Corners have been fantastic so far. We really have been pleased with the way things have been going. Our students have been doing a nice job, but their masking staff has been working very hard and with their wonderful lessons and keeping everything going here. As Mr. Tappin had mentioned earlier, we as well have started our NWE MAP testing as well. Last week, we did our first round of it with our ELA groups and they did a really nice job with it. Getting through with the technological components, having all of our students with devices. We made sure that we had all of that in place. And you know, after working some kinks out, everything worked out really well, which really helped us prepare for the coming math assessments and them starting to Thursday and Friday. Our remote groups, on the other hand, had a little more flexibility when they were going to administer those. And they've done a nice job doing that out of their individual classes throughout the course of the week. So far, the updates have been, things have been going really well. And Dr. Malloy has done a nice job in putting together that schedule and working together with our remote teachers to ensure that those were moving along smoothly. Here we had a nice, authentic learning experience for our students in Miss Maria Kidseto's class, where she had two separate occasions where we had an author, Sarah Sullivan, come in to speak to the writing process and what it takes to be an author. And we had an opportunity to speak to the students and read one of her books that has been published titled, Rising the Music Down. And so that really was a wonderful opportunity for our students there, along with another opportunity where they had a paleontologist, Vincent Sentucci, come in and speak to them regarding fossil finding and the process of being a paleontologist and the work that goes into that. So I know that our students had a really nice, rich experience with that, that they all enjoyed. Next up, student of the month, we're going to be kicking that off at the close of this month, starting with our first group being named for the month of October. So with this, we are recognizing students by department. Every department is nominating five students. And we set those nominations up by our Brighton Believe attributes. For this month, we'll be looking at students displaying attributes of respect. And so we're getting all those names together and we'll be presenting our students with those in the cafeteria in every grade level. And then for those students who are remote and who have been nominated and been named a student of the month, we'll be delivering those to their homes so they can await for those to be coming their way soon. As I've been noted earlier, Red Ribbon Week is kicked off at 12 Corners as well. Today was Silly Sock Day, so that was nice to see kids walking around with their silly socks and enjoying that along with the Brighton Believes Gear Day tomorrow for that. And then with that, coming Halloween, Thursday and Friday, have their opportunities to dress up in their costumes and had to make some nice friendly reminders about those should be appropriate. And looking forward to see what that unfolds like this week at 12 Corners for my first Halloween there. So that should be fun. Next up, Schools to Watch, we'll be working on a redesignation process. So we'll be looking at finalizing that process in the next month or so to have that redesignation application in by December to have all that paperwork in. Mr. Thomas was nice enough to have most of that process completed for me coming into the job. So we're looking to finalize it with some of the teacher components of it and having departments work on their parts to finalize that process. And then we'll be submitting that in for redesignation for this year. And then closing out with some updates, we have our town hall with myself and Dr. McGowan on the 29th. We will be having on the second, our retakes of pictures at TCMS for all students in K12 and also having our PTA, PTSA meeting with the principals and counselors on the 12th, which will be nice. We've set up an opportunity for our counselors to talk about students managing stress and learning in the remote world for our family. So that would be a nice opportunity for them to have that conversation with our counselors. Our marking period will be closing on the 13th and beginning on the 16th. So we started the second marking period and with the close of the month with our Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks again for the look inside. And you know, again, looking at the one slide that you showed, the two virtual learning experiences. You know, it just continues to be just such a bright spot on how all of our folks continue to find ways to say, yes, we can and make it work, you know, and so thank you for sharing that with us. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Next on to Brighton High School and Principal Tom Hall.
Here we go. Good evening, everybody. Hope you're doing well. We are all about mask wearing like everybody else. So again, continuing to emphasize, and we're hoping that the due diligence that all of us are doing in our buildings with wearing masks, social distancing, washing hands, sanitizing, and you can't advertise it enough, but that's something we review quite a bit. And again, I would say K12, the kids are doing an awesome job with it. We're excited that we've taken some feedback. You know, we've been in school now, it'll be almost two months. We are with Dr. McGowan's permission, we'll be starting other clubs and activities from 3:00 to 3:45 for some in-school activities on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We will also be getting, our other clubs will be starting remotely or virtually on November 2nd as well. So the kids are very excited about that for many of our clubs to get going. Some of our competitive clubs have started in September, but most have not. We'll also be looking to do after-school and before-school help, starting November 2nd. So we'll be offering again some help for kids who want to meet with their teachers if they're available between 3:00 and 3:45, starting on November 2nd. And we're also on November 2nd, we'll be piloting, doing one flex period. We had a meeting with teachers today, trying to iron out the safety protocols that would be involved in that. We'll be opening up several more spaces. But the part of doing a one flex is seeing if we can get students to meet with all of their teachers or have access to all of their teachers currently with our split flex. You know, kids will only be able to access certain teachers because they're, they might have a flex, which we call Flex A, but their teachers are doing Flex B, so they don't match up. We did that to try to keep social distancing, but we feel, you know, we're going to put some things in place and we're going to pilot it for a couple of weeks and see if that helps. I think that will help relieve some stress of students and faculty with just finding time to meet with one another in this hybrid world. Something we've been doing, and we started this at one of the blueprint meetings way back in Shadow Lake, we developed this statement for committed, if we commit to the idea that we are Brighton and we do not want to reflect the general advanced course demographics of most of the country, which includes low SES, a variety of ethnicity data in terms of percentage of students who are taking advanced courses. And we want to have more heterogeneous groupings in our, all of our advanced and accelerated classes. We've been viewing our AP data and I think I probably driven Debbie Baker and Erin Mason crazy over the last couple of weeks trying to gather this because we wanted to check, kind of see where we were with our AP data this year, coming into the remote and hybrid worlds. So this slide here just shows the percentage of students, the number of students who are taking at least one AP in grades nine through 12. Not a whole lot different between last year and this year. About 45% of our student body is taking an AP, almost 50%, at least taking one AP course. This slide, I have comparative data from going back for a very long time. When you look at our grades nine through 12 and you're looking at the breakdown with ethnicity, 75% of our students taking APs are white, 3% are black or African American this year. Last year, we were 5%, 4% Hispanic, 13% Asian. And then when you look at multiracial. And then when you look at multiracial, 6%. And our total black, Hispanic, multiracial students is 13%. So, it's very close to last year in terms of the percentage. You can see several years ago, we were only at 10% when you added all of those minority groups together. However, so again, that's grades nine through 12. So, all of our students nine through 12 and the percent taking at least one AP. The one thing I was very pleased with this year, and we've been doing a lot with, you know, our poverty, looking at poverty, looking at racial and ethnic disparities. And, and with all of the pushes and interventions we put into place to encourage AP participation, you know, the things counselors have done differently, teachers in terms of course recommendations, tapping students to challenge themselves to take an AP. We've been doing this now for at least five years. You know, it's been a district initiative, been in the blueprint. We have, and I didn't think this number would really change much, but this year we have 79% of our graduating seniors, if they finish the AP courses they're in, 79% of them will graduate with at least one AP. That's compared to 70%, pretty much the last three years of our graduating class. So, it's almost 10 percentage points higher from last year to this fall, which I was pretty surprised at and pleased. When you look at our graduating seniors with one or more AP courses who are low SES, 95% of our low SES students will graduate with at least one or more AP courses. I would dare say that's probably higher than many other surrounding communities when it comes to the low SS, SES population. Our African-American students this year, we have 18 out of 24 African-American students in the senior class, or 75% will graduate with at least one AP. That's compared to 22% going back to 17, 18. And similar to our, some of our failure data, this is not happening by chance alone. This is, you know, due to interventions and things that we have put in place at the high school and getting students prepared to leave us and go on to college and hopefully be more successful, but at least have that college experience with the courses we've implemented and the opportunities we've given for teachers to work with students in classes to have a better opportunity for teaching all students. I was afraid that with the hybrid year, it's definitely going to be more difficult for all of our students because they're not having all the same face-to-face time. But right now, we're on a pretty good trajectory. Highest number of our Asian students, 100% of our Asian students will graduate with one or more AP and 58% of our Hispanic students, which is down a little bit from last year, but still up compared to three years ago. So, we had homecoming, a modified virtual homecoming that we did have student participation in. But we did have senior nights last Friday and we're going to have some more coming up in two weeks on November 7th for our cross-country and swim teams. But we had senior nights, all the teams and their families came together on the turf. Nate Merritt did a really nice job with his coaches in putting together the soccer teams, girls and boys, the tennis team and our field hockey teams. And they all came together to take pictures with one another. Their families were able to be there. It was a really nice night, a lot of positive feedback. And just want to, you know, give kudos to Dr. McGowan and Nate Merritt for helping to organize that and getting that idea going. It was a really nice night. Kids are excited. The snack line is now open. It was not open at the start of the year. If you're around in the building, if you're in the building and you're an employee or a board member or a student, you can stop on by. Great stuff. We also, we did have the virtual homecoming. I would probably, Stella would agree, not as much participation, nearly as much as we would have if we had a regular homecoming. We had class theme days, we're wore spirit wear. There was a virtual concert. There were virtual competitions that Stella will talk a little more about online. Apparently, somebody was impersonating me on a Zoom. It was not me and I will not suspend you or kick you out of school if you answered a question wrong. So, but apparently I was saying that to people. There are t-shirt orders being done for our classes. All the kids, they put together designs. So, that's exciting. Red Ribbon Week is happening at the high school too. We've worn red the last two days. We're looking to wear Brighton gear and team spirit wear on Thursday and Friday. We have, we had a town hall meeting tomorrow night, 7:15 with Dr. McGowan. And our marking period, just like the middle school ends on the 13th, and we're ready to start the second marking period already. Unbelievable. And that's it.
Thanks, Tom. You're right. That does sound weird, the second marking period starting. But, you know, I think, first of all, congratulations. I mean, the AP data on seniors with AP and the numbers and the representation. I mean, we've been working on this for a long time. This has taken a lot of effort and continues to take a lot of effort by everyone to make that work. We made the commitment to it and everybody has followed through and made it work. So, congratulations. It's great to see that. Also, you know, making, I said earlier, first of all, I think we should add principal reports. Not that I need to give you something more to do, but we should probably have these at least twice a month because seeing inside the building, seeing our kids, seeing teachers and kids, we all need more of that, right? We all need to follow our kids, but being able to make homecoming and senior night work in some fashion is just tremendous to see that and you can't help but smile. And I have to think that down the road, parents and grandparents showing kids and grandkids photos from their senior night, all masked up, is going to make for some really interesting conversation and dialogue. But it's hard to see that right now, of course. But anyway, thank you to all four of you and the look inside the buildings. And we'll hear from Stella a little bit, but hearing and seeing our students and teachers has never been more important than it is right now. So, thank you all. We appreciate that. Moving on to the remainder of our reports, which are not generally as exciting, but we, they are items of business that we were going to handle. We have our reports, our financial reports, start off the report section. We have posted online the Treasurers Report from Lou and Dahlia for the period ending August 31st, 2020. May we have a motion to accept and receive that Treasurers Report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Sue, I think. Does anyone have any questions or of Lou or comment? And again, all this material for those watching is posted on the agenda link under the Board of Education tab on our webpage. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That's seven in favor and none opposed. Next up this evening, we have, we're going to talk about this in a couple of ways, but the annual independent financial statements and management letter from our auditors. We have another, there's an agenda item 5B that we're on right now. There's also an agenda item nine, approval of the audited financial statement. So, I'm going to ask the group for a motion in a moment to combine that together because it's the same package of data. So, first of all, can we have a motion, please, for the acceptance and approval of those statements and the audit, please? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Andrea. And for those, we have this, all this information posted. Audit Committee will have a report out in a little bit on Audit Committee. We reviewed this information in our last Audit Committee meeting. This is provided to the district by Tom Zuber as our CPA with Ray Wager CPA, which is Division of Mango Metzger Bar and Company. And it is a package of their audit of our financial statements, the executive summary and the communication of the internal control related matters. And I will tell you that it's a long, full package. But our folks are doing an excellent job and our counselors are pleased. And we appreciate everybody's work in a diligent way from a financial standpoint. Does anyone have any further questions or comments? Anybody have a question of Lou specifically that we want to talk about? All right, then hearing none on that, all in favor, please, of that acceptance and the approval? Any opposed? That would be seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you, everyone. And next up, back to the very positive side, our student representative report and Stella is here on my screen. So, we're going to hear, or she was on my screen. She's still on my screen? Okay, Andrea, got it.
Hi. First, I want to talk about homecoming, which was last week. We had our virtual events that we worked really hard to plan and I think they went about as well as we could have expected personally. Our Quip Lash game, which is kind of like a game where you try to make jokes and then you vote on whoever has the best joke. It was actually really fun. We had about, we had like 52 participants at the most, which was a lot more than we actually expected. And yes, we did have someone impersonating Dr. Hall, but I don't think anyone believed that because he was spelling some words wrong. We also had a scavenger hunt over the weekend where we kind of sent out some clues for students to look for and take pictures of. And we had some participation with that. Obviously, we would have liked to have more, but I think the students who did participate found it really fun and we got some good pictures to look at. For Spirit Days, they were definitely less successful than they have been in the past years, which is understandable because of the hybrid schedule and it's, I don't know, everything was kind of weird and messy this year, but I think we still pulled it off well. I think maybe it would have gone better if there was a football game. But I know we can't do a football homecoming game. So, there was talk about possibly doing a homecoming game during the fall to football season. So, that's definitely something we're going to want to talk about. As far as clubs, the ones that have been meeting virtually have been really successful and participation has been pretty good. So, I'm super excited to see when we start having club meetings in person, how participation is going to be. And I think it's going to, I think it's going to be great. As far as safety, I think we're doing a really good job adapting to the new normal. I think even with the colder weather and not being able to go outside as much, we're still able to social distance. I think we've really gotten used to it. And always wearing masks except for when we're eating and even then, students are being really, really careful. And then we had a question about lockers since the weather has been getting colder. But Dr. Hall thankfully is letting us use our lockers if we need to, to store coats. So, that's really exciting and awesome. For sports, the senior night celebration was really powerful because I think seniors got to feel super honored, even though this is definitely not a normal season. So, I was really excited about that. And as far as playing, playing sports while wearing masks, I was talking to a lot of athletes and they said that it really wasn't as big of an issue as they thought it was going to be. And it's been going pretty well overall. So, I think we're all just really grateful for our flexibility of the teachers and we're super excited for what's to come in the next couple of months.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Stella. We appreciate that report out. And again, a continuation of our principal reports and students making it work along with our, our staff and teachers. So, thank you very much for joining us tonight and bringing that look back to us. Next up, we have our Board of Education reports, including first off, our Monroe County School Boards Association standing committees. And I will tell you that, given the unusual nature of this year, as we've gotten started, the committee work has been a little scattered, if you will. Most of these have been held in, in person and attendance seems to be pretty good, but there are also conflicts that have arisen due to the fact that these are being held on Wednesdays right now. So, it's, it's made it a little bit more difficult. But the Labor Relations Group, I'm not sure if anybody has a report out for us. I can tell you that on September 23rd, they discussed emergency response drills. And on the 21st of October, they discussed COVID issues related to unemployment insurance and unemployment benefits, which is a huge issue for all districts right now, atop of everything else. Was anybody able to attend that one? I don't think we were able to get to that one. And the next Labor Relations Meeting is on the 18th. I don't know if we have a topic for that yet.
Yeah, it's labor issues during catastrophic times.
Well, there, there you go. Timely, another timely. Lou, you better get to that. I'm just recover too. All right, thank you, Andrea. I appreciate it. I missed that one. Information exchange, information exchange, again, since our last report out, there's been two meetings. On September 23rd was a virtual learning presentation, including our own Debbie Baker with a panel, I believe Debbie of three other experts in this field. And it was an update on virtual learning. And I did not attend that one, but I understand it was very well received and went very well. Dr. Baker, would you agree from your standpoint?
I presented along with my colleagues from West Arundacoit and from Hilton. And the general theme, as you said, Mark, was, you know, what have school districts done to respond to the virtual learning environment? We each had a similar story, but yet, you know, some different examples for what we had done. And that, like you said, it was very well attended and, you know, I felt like there were some good questions at the end, which always is kind of an indicator that people were engaged and interested in the topic.
Right. And I heard, so they got, they had the school, the Boards of School Board Association got really good feedback from that presentation, Debbie. I do know that. And then also, the latest, they did meet on the 14th. That was, again, topical and I think the group has done a great job of trying to revise topics over the summer, very specific to the issues that we're all dealing with, right? On the 14th, it was about mental health issues and supports regarding reopening schools, the way that we've all had to do it. And I did not attend that one. I don't know if we had anybody at that one. But again, it was pretty well attended and good feedback. And I will remind our board members that the Labor Relations Meetings and the Information Exchange Meetings are being taped and are available shortly thereafter, within a few days, on the school, on the school board's website under the Members Only section. So, if you need some assistance on that, just send a note to Becky. I think there's a credential. Everyone is, maybe not unique, but anyway, we'll, we'll figure that out. So, so that's Information Exchange. There is a meeting on November 18th. This should be pretty fascinating. It's two tech, tech individuals from R C S D on the digital divide that they're going to present on, on the 18th of November. Legislative Committee met on the 7th of October. And it was legislative update from Sherry, as always. Mostly talking about election and candidates, things like that. Sherry does a great job of reaching out to all candidates, offers every candidate running for every area assembly and senate seat, House of Representatives seat. She offers them the opportunity for a legislative briefing. It'll most take advantage of that. So, she does do that. We had a discussion about the resolutions for the NISBA Convention, which is ongoing right now. The business meeting on Saturday coming up. We finalized legislative priorities. We got a report. We are Legislative Committee and then subcommittees of the membership are updating a number of the position papers of the association. And that's in progress right now. Three have been completed and I think two more are in process. And then the other remainder of that meeting was spent on topics and questions for our two local regents because our meeting upcoming on the 4th of November, the entire meeting will be the Legislative Committee meeting with Regent Brown and Regent Norwood. We have not had them at a legislative meeting in quite a while. So, that, that will be interesting and we look forward to that. So, that is update on those three different committees. Does anyone else have anything to add on that? I know we, we've been struggling to try to meet and, or cover all those meetings and have been able to try to do some things virtually. But anyway, our, I also, our Bosie's report, all of you will recall fondly that Dr. Marv Sax would give the Bosie's report based on what Sora Sax, our board member representation to the Bosie's Board, would give him in notes. Sora is now continuing that tradition by sending the report directly to me. So, we'll make sure it's in the minutes. But a couple of quick highlights, Monroe One Bosie's got their internal, external and payroll audits back and that all looked very good. Similar to all of us, their instruction has changed greatly. They have combinations of, you know, hybrid and most programs are meeting in a hybrid method. And they're, they've added some additional emotional and social supports to the students that they're dealing with. You know, the EMCC students, the career component of that school are meeting remotely. They may need some additional time to fulfill their lab and hands-on requirements, as you would imagine, you know, given the career training that they are taking. The other note that she gives me is that the capital project, you recall, two years ago, we approved our contribution to that capital project is on schedule. And several programs in the career and technology education will be moving on to different rooms or buildings with newer equipment and updated facilities. And so, like our construction project, one of the things with pandemic situation- And so like our construction project, one of the things with pandemic situation has allowed them to move forward on uh, construction. The other thing I will mention, we had talked about this year would be a year we would visit BOSI's. Um, that's not gonna happen anytime soon, obviously. I, I. Guess it's possible we could get it in late in the year, but I'm thinking that we won't be visiting BOSI's until the next school year, but is Kevin shaking his head at me on the screen? So anyway, that's uh, update from BOSI's at the moment on that. Then, other board member reports. And before we get to individual board member reports, I mentioned earlier that the Audit Committee met for the first time during the school year. And Karen or Larry, would either one of you like to report out on that meeting?
Sure, we were able to get a, a clear view of um, where we stand with our audit report. Um, and talked about the fact our auditor was, was clear with us that our strategic reserve planning. Actually puts us in a, a good place to help weather this storm, um, where we're looking at changing revenues and. Issues with receiving our aid from the state in a timely fashion that, that our reserves will help keep us in. As good a spot as we can expect, um, while still potentially facing challenges ahead. Um, we talked about things like expecting an increase in the coming years in the rate paid to the teachers and employees retirement system and how our, our reserve planning, again, really does. Make a difference when, when those spikes come and that any, any kind of savings we recoup during shutdowns. Will go towards changes in um, P P E and cleaning and one-to-one programs. Um, and that that's positive for a long-term, that's positive in a long-term financial planning kind of lens that, that, you know, savings. Savings are, aren't necessarily a windfall, but then will be used to make these expenditures in unexpected areas. So all in all, a decent place to be, all things considering.
Yeah, I did, I did add just quickly, Mark, uh, credit to, to Dahlia and Lou because the other thing we always look at. Is the day-to-day stuff and during this with people in and out of the buildings all the time. Um, they continue to do a great job, not only watching the big dollars, but the small dollars. So. That day-to-day sort of tactical stuff, we continue to be really tight on, which is comforting as well.
Yeah, that's a great point, Larry. And, and just for those of you just an update, uh, the Audit Committee is a subcommittee of the Board. It's a consists of uh, Karen and, and Larry and I and, and, and as part of that committee, it's Lou and Dahlia Watts, our treasurer. And also our internal claims auditor, Michelle Norton. We review her reports and then normally one of our CPAs. Uh, either from our external or internal audit firms are there with us and this Tom Zuber from uh, Ray Wager. Uh, was there and we reviewed all those documents at that, at that item, at that meeting also. So. Again, thank you and we'll continue to report out on that to the Board after those Audit Committee meetings. Um, other board member reports. So this is an opportunity that the Board takes. To quickly go around and update the community and the, and staff here this evening on any individual activities or initiatives or. Whatever that uh, individual board members would like to uh, to bring up. So I guess I'm seeing Julene's hand, so I'll start with Julene.
I attended the First Wellness Committee of the uh, year last week. And our focus this year is going to be trying to find ways to support students, family and staff during this unusual time. Mr. Tappin was there as well. I don't think anybody else on the screen was there um, last week. Um, but we're planning on creating um, a wellness suite, which will be online um, calming rooms. Uh, activities that can be used by individuals at their, at their leisure, at their discretion. That um, might just bring some balance and some, some needed calming to their, their lives during this stressful time. Our next meeting is November twelfth. And some folks are already doing some research on that and we'll have more to report a month from now.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that. Larry, you had something?
Yeah, just real quick on the construction side, Mark. You may be aware there's work going on in all four buildings.
I had heard that.
Yes, um, but uh, and the principals always do a great job of touching on that and, and again, as always, it's a combination, a combination rather of, of modernization. But also infrastructure stuff, what we refer to as the stuff behind the walls that you can't see. So. Really quickly, and this is exciting, in, in the high school, the seats were delivered into the auditorium, so that's getting closer to finish. That's really great news. Uh, on a different front, the science classrooms are about ninety-five percent complete. Punch lists are being worked, so you're gonna see real progress there. Uh, TCMS, the art rooms and the library, there's continuing to be progress there. Um, in FRES, and I think Allison touched on this, but I don't remember, we were utilizing some swing spaces, which is a term for. You move uh, some students and learning into another space so that you can work on the space they were in. So we're moving people around a little bit on that and it seems cruel to say this now to Principal Tappin, but. The air conditioning is working in Council Rock and that was something we didn't have before. So come May or June, we'll be ready for everything and there is um, u- utilization within the new South Wing, so a long ways to go there yet and. There's still work to do in all the schools, but really great progress. I'll continue to say that, that our, our buildings folks who are working with these contractors are just doing heroic work in, in terms of. Um, finding problems oftentimes before they get real big. And uh, big credit to Lou, cuz these large projects always have unknown expenses. And Lou's been doing an outstanding job. We obviously heard a little bit about this, Mark and Karen and I at Audit. But just a ton of work. You've got four buildings and a lot of work going on. There are safety issues to be on top of and there's expense issues, so. I'm, I'm continually impressed with the work that's being done, but you're beginning to see a lot of visible progress. Um, and you won't see all the stuff behind the walls, but there's a lot of good work during uh, being done there as well.
Fantastic. Thanks, Larry. Andrea, did you have something?
So um, I, we had our first Curriculum Council Meeting, October first. Uh, where we uh, reviewed what, what we've done up to, uh, to date and then what we're, we'll be doing the coming year based on blueprint. Uh, we discussed Ready for Rigor Framework and its relationship to the culturally responsive practices. Um, we explored definitions for terms of race, racism and bias, so we could create a common language. And then we defined a course of action for the coming year. Our next meeting is November twelfth. We've got a, a group from NYU and Debbie, you probably. Know they're, they, they have a specific name, but they're coming in. Um, they're from the, I think the Office of Global. Inclusion and faculty mentoring, maybe? No?
It's the NYU Metro Center for Equity and Transformation in Education.
Okay, and they'll be coming into our meeting on the twelfth. And then uh, this week, we'll be having our first diversity and equity meeting. Um, I think on Thursday.
Thursday, the D E I Committee and then the three subcommittees will break off at the beginning of that. Yes, thank you. Randy was saying. Alright, thanks Andrea. Anything else?
I have um, a little report.
Sue, yep.
So as the new board member, um, you know, I'm sure you all remember current board members. Um, that you have to attend your mandatory New York State Financial Training. So a little six hours Saturday spent a couple of weeks ago. I learned more about accounting than I ever thought I would. Um, but it was time well spent. I'm still chugging through this thing. Um, what else have I done? Another, what, what's that, Mark?
Well, you could join the Audit Committee when you memorize that.
Exactly right. Um, I also um, had the privilege to attend um. The P T S A meeting of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Meeting um, as part of the P T S A. Um, and at this meeting, they welcomed a new co-chair, Dr. Tamika Wagstaff, who's joining from um. R I T, um, she's a doctor at R I T and um. Again, this is the P T S A part of the Diversity Equity um, and Inclusion Group. And they're really focusing on leadership, support, encouragement. Um, and district initiatives for all families, so sort of from the Parent Teacher Association side. Um, and then tomorrow night, I have my first meeting with the. Teacher Center Policy Board as the Board Representative to that, so that is new for me as well. Um, Dr. Sax used to do that and I'll take over tomorrow night.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Sue. Christina, did you have anything you wanted to bring up tonight?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Karen, anything further tonight? You did Audit, but.
Uh, Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee meets for the first time on Thursday, so I'm looking forward to that and you can expect Peggy to join me, so.
Oh, good. Toddlers and pets, we enjoy on Zoom meetings.
I've got both. Sometimes they're in my lap at the same time.
Okay, thanks. A couple of things I just wanted to bring up. And one of the things that we've all discovered is. Uh, you can actually attend a lot more things that are virtual than when you have to leave your house because you have no excuse anyway. So uh, I've, I've been able to join in a lot of different things going on lately. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Um, Kevin will bring it up, I'm sure, but the United Way Twenty-One Day. Racial Equity Challenge, we have signed up as a district. I think most Monroe County school districts have signed up as districts, Kevin, if I'm not mistaken, but. I will tell you that if, for those of you that haven't checked in yet, it started on Friday as day one. It's a tremendous amount of material each day. It's way more than one day's worth of material to check in, review and take a look at. I think it's great. Material. It's interesting because so much of it, we've been through the basic stages of. But there's a lot of resources there that it will help, I think, all the different work that we've done. Also, I was part of, the Rochester Urban League ran a two-day seminar last week virtually on interrupt racism. And I signed up and it was, took part in that and that was fantastic. It was mostly. Academic business and not-for-profit folks who were involved in it. But again, what I, what struck me, and I have a lot of source material from that, a lot of new folks presenting and having conversations. That I had not seen before and had not listened to before. So again, more voices, more points of view, more outlooks, sharing more information was just a great thing. Um. And the other thing I did want to mention to the group, I haven't mentioned this much with the group, but I am also a member of the Town of Brighton's Idea Board. That's the uh, Inclusion, Diversity and Equity Advisory Board. That group is a group of sixteen Brighton residents. We've been meeting now for almost two years. Our work is to create and deliver a diversity plan to the Town of Brighton. And there is a web, part of the Town of Brighton website lists this material. But we've held three virtual world cafes that residents have attended and we're getting closer and closer to a point of putting together some preliminary draft. Plans and then putting that online and out for community involvement and input. And I'll remind the group of that later too, when that's available and uh, if you'd like, you can weigh in and take a look at that, so. Uh, so anyway, that's some of what I've been doing the last couple of weeks or a month or so, anyway. Alright, moving along, then we will turn it over to our Brighton Teachers Association and the report from Nicole.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Great, welcome.
Thanks. So I normally don't read word for word from the report, but I do wanna read this particular part. Which is a thank you from the V T A. Um, so we've been working really hard, three hundred and fifty-plus teachers to. Provide the best experience for our students and families and we would like to thank the families for their patience and for working as partners. We would like to thank the um, the other staff that we have, but we really like to thank our school nurses. Um, who have just worked so hard, so diligently, compassionately. To support the students, the families and the staff. Um, and we're really proud of them, so a special shout out to the nurses. Um, I'll do quicker pieces on the others. Uh, we did participate, the V T A participated in the Adopt a Highway Program. We um, collected eight bags of trash and many car parts. Um, we'd like to thank the Brighton merchants who keep so many of their properties clean. Um, but the V T A really enjoys being a part of this every year. We also, as the V T A participated in the Making Strides um, through having a team. It was a Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. It was very different. We, there was not the big walk as there usually is. Um, but we did still raise some funds to donate. Um, Council Rock, so if you looked at your report, the one picture from Council Rock with all of the timers. So the remote teachers have found that if they give kids timers. That that helps them know how long to read or how long to um, work on writing because some of them might. Write a couple of words, say I'm done. Um, so they've really been working on independence and stamina with the uh, timers. So that was a great photograph that was of a report. So Lacey, we've been out uh, with that piece and. Ashley Youngman contributed that. One of the things we're really trying to do is be very thoughtful about how we speak to the class about their cohorts. Um, and to really use language that unites us. So some of the action pieces that we've done are, we. Ash, Mrs. Youngman and I work together, but we have sent um, All About Questionnaires home and then the students have been writing back. To other friends in their cohorts. So each month we switch pen pals. Um, and that's a way to build community. Um, one of the things we did was the, the hearts. Um, but what's really great, kind of the, the result you see in our, in our um, Zooms on Wednesdays. The students are now greeting their cohort partners. They, we're one big class. Um, and that's just the best feeling ever. It's really noticeable to see them connect with each other, even though they haven't actually seen each other in person. Um, Robyn Ackerman contributed that as a remote teacher this year, she's really trying to. Um, do what each child uh, needs. So she was able to get Osmo kits from the Brighton Education Fund. And, and deliver them to learners who were very interested in mathematics. Um, but she really is trying to personalize that homeschool connection. So there was a little picture of Osmo pit. And hopefully you were able to click on the link for the Council Rock Outdoor Observer, so. This is what the Extended Studies is putting together. Um, to share what they are, how they are connecting their habits of mind to observations that they are making in the world. Um, so that's a really great thing that Andrea Yaman submitted. And then I hopefully got to see the movie of the kids dancing if you clicked on the Zoom link. Um, so the Zoom link was, the music department has just been incredible. Everything is on a cart and they come into the classroom and they have the kids up dancing and singing and. Things that they would normally be doing interactively. They, they're doing still with some distance between them, but it, it was, it's really great. To kind of be the fly on the wall in the classroom and just see what an amazing job our specials teachers are doing. Uh, at FRES, Lanny Masarowski shared um, about how she is keeping her community circles going. So she actually has a representation of her circles. So that the kids know who they're gonna greet next and it's just like a circle. I know that you all came and visited classrooms. It runs just like a circle in the classroom where they know exactly who they're going to go to. Um, and again, that, that idea of classroom community is something we're really trying to work on and keep going. Mrs. Hart's Technology Classes, fourth and fifth eighth grade classes are learning about cubes and properties. So they made mobiles out of wire clothes hangers and. To talk about how to do wants and needs and they're going to construct tiny houses. Out of shoeboxes, tape and recyclables and then they're gonna electrify their tiny houses using um, Play-Doh, L E Ds and batteries. I can't wait to see that. Um, at T C M S, similar to what um, Allison shared with the FRES phys ed teachers, T C M S uh, phys ed teachers. Are trained to get their classes exercising at home. They're using gallon water jugs. Um, laundry baskets for weighted bars, cans of food, grocery bags, towels. Um, on a door as a pull-up barn, so they're, they're being very inventive with what they have. And those are workouts programmed by the P E staff. Um, Maria Quetzitos' sixth grade class had the author visit, which um, Mr. Nunes shared. Um, and talked about being an author. And then there was a shout-out for Laura Sarche, who's the remote special ed teacher. And what a phenomenal job she is doing with her students. She's working on incorporating mindfulness. And math lessons and trying to make sure that. and trying to make sure that she is bridging the gap between home and school and being virtual. BHS, really, the counseling department submitted something to give a huge shout out for the seniors this year and how they are adapting to the difficulties that they are facing. Cancelled college visits, cancelled exams, changes in how they go to visit or learn about where they might like to go to school. And they really wanted to give a shout out to the positive attitudes that they are seeing and how they're being role models for the underclassmen. And they are crushing it is the quote that I have, they're crushing it. So way to go, Class of 20, Stella was like, yes. And then the last thing was a submission by sorry, I lost it, for Algebra II Honors by Andrea Doyle. And they are coming to, they're doing all of their work on their Zoom and electronically and working in groups. So again, a lot of community work, even though there's a lot of virtual pieces to it. We're making the best of it. So thank you always. Thank you to the board for all your support. Great seeing you, Pat.
Thank you, Nicole. It's a it's a great report. It's a great companion to our principal reports. And thanks for including, you know, the links and the photos and things that you're all that you were able to put in there. Again, like I said earlier, being able to see teachers and kids together is just such a great thing. And ingenuity that continues to, you know, be a part of every single day. So thank you so much. And again, making it work is is the best I would, I guess, categorize it as. So thank you. Our PTSA report and Eleanor, welcome.
Thanks, Mark. Hi, everybody. I have a pretty quick report. The PTSA is still plugging along. They had their first speaker last, this month, who was Pam Spilachi, who spoke about sort of learning and she is a social worker and about kind of how to get through this as a family and kind of to look at all of the positives and be grateful for what we have. And it was a great talk. Next month, we have Calvin Eaton, who will be joining us and pairing up with our DEI committee. That Sue Sue mentioned earlier is met last week and they had a really great conversation. And we welcome to Mika Wogstaff as the co-chair to join Crystal in all of the great work that she's been starting as that new committee under PTSA. And I know they're working closely with Kevin and with the board and everyone for all of the diversity, equity and inclusion work that needs to be done across the United States and the world, probably. Also, just to mention picture retakes, as all of the principals mentioned earlier, and their reports are happening starting Thursday and Friday this week at the high school and then moving through all of the schools over the next couple of weeks. We did remind parents, if the parents are looking to see what the pictures are and they still haven't received theirs, they can log into school tools and all of the kids' new pictures are front and center on their profiles that everyone can kind of see what they are to see whether or not they want to have retakes be done. I also was asked to mention that Brighton Cal, PTSA calendars are still for sale. They are for sale at ours market as well as if you order them online. One of our lovely members will deliver it right to your house for you and so it will appear on your porch if you still would like to order when they are available. I think that that's about it in terms of the reports. As again, this went out over email, but Festival Ideas sadly has been cancelled this year, which we know is a very popular event and that made a lot of coming to the decision is the right decision to make, but it was definitely a challenging one. Please look for, there are ways that we're looking to try and keep the spirit alive of the Festival of Ideas and kind of move forward with that. So there'll be more details coming up.
Thank you very much, Eleanor. You're right. I mean, the Festival Ideas, I mean, I don't think none of us were surprised, right? When the note went out and I think the ability to try to make a cancelled COVID t-shirt to keep the t-shirt string going is a great thing. And you know, this has nothing to do with us, but again, another experience today of getting an email from Tuba Christmas being Karen, I'll laugh with Karen, but Tuba Christmas sending an hour note out today for all of you, those of you on the waitlist and on the ticket list, sorry, not until next year from now, but keep keep playing the horns and keep working on the those holiday tunes. But anyway, Dr. McGowan, Super Tennis Report.
I can't imagine that a year ago, if you told me Tuba Christmas and COVID cancellation or COVID casualty would be mentioned in a meeting, I would have no idea what you're talking about on either account, but.
Right, yeah, even none of us, right? None of us could ever have figured this out.
You know, pretty remarkable.
Thought this was even possible.
Right, and not remarkable in a great way, of course. And and I joined the counseling department in talking about the seniors and crushing it. And I know we said this a lot last spring with the Class of 20, but again, the Class of 21 is experiencing this as well. And with a different challenge, missing, you know, the fall of their senior year in a different way, especially impact that that has as they leverage that period of time towards next year. And and we feel awfully badly for them regarding that. And and all of our students who aren't able to participate in the same activities as they normally would. And as Dr. Hall mentioned, I'm really glad that those are going to start on Monday, the other clubs and activities. Some limited athletics happening and we keep thinking about ways we can strategically reopen safely. Which leads me to the first item that I wanted to mention, a thank you to our community, all of our staff members, our parents, our kids, for taking this as seriously as they have been. We have had very limited, very limited issues relative to quarantine and illness. The dashboard numbers are public numbers. The community knows that we had a a single positive case not related to school. And although there was a limited quarantine based on some exposure, because we have, the only time we have kids without masks is during lunch. That has not been an issue in terms of infection spreading either. So precautionary quarantine based on Health Department guidance and that's worked out well. So I say all of that to tell people that that could change at a moment's notice. We know that. We know that this is an insidious infection and a virus that does not discriminate and it could could tomorrow be different. And we could be talking about different strategies relative to kids' education immediately. And there's not a moment that that goes by that we think that we passed that. I just want to say thank you, though, to people and encourage them to keep doing what you're doing because it is working. Keeping vigilant and as we approach the holiday season, the small intimate family gatherings are a concern that has been brought up by the CDC and by many health experts. Please think about that. It's not our place to talk to you about what happens in your homes. And that's obviously a personal and a family decision. We would just continue to reinforce the messages though, sent by public health experts. I say the real doctors who are asking people to contemplate those choices carefully. I'd also say keep masking, keep distancing, get your flu shot. All the things that we know are important right now to keep people healthy, it is working. It is not easy and kids are doing an incredible job at school. If anybody doubted that for a second, they've been proven wrong by children and how they've approached this, by staff members, how they've approached it and by parents who've been really thoughtful about this. So thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate that. Also, thank you to our staff members for the work they're doing to provide a really wonderful program for kids, given the limitations we have in place. And the the difference in terms of online virtual opportunities for kids, this notion of hybrid learning. Again, talk about things that a year ago, we wouldn't have been talking about or known or weren't part of our vocabulary. You know, for systems that have looked very similar for going on 100 years in so many ways. We are in a whole different space now than we were a few months ago. And that's because of the effort of our staff, the commitment of our staff, the talent of our staff. And I I know it's overwhelming and difficult and a challenge each and every day. And would like just our community to know how much we appreciate what's happening from our staff. And in as the people who are charged with observing and evaluating that, I can tell you they're doing it, they're doing it very well and they're putting a tremendous effort into it. And we want to make sure the community understands that as well. That being said, we're also looking forward to hearing more from our community at the virtual town halls and through the exchanges that are out right now. So as was mentioned by the principals, those will happen tomorrow night and on Thursday. The exchanges continue to be open. We really appreciate the feedback. It is very helpful for us. And there is a tremendous amount of positive feedback. So this isn't a fishing expedition for just compliments. We want the constructive feedback too. We also always hope people are patient and thoughtful as they enter that feedback and constructive in the feedback. But overwhelmingly, in those exchanges right now, we're hearing a lot of really good things and good suggestions. And so we appreciate that and would like more of that. And we'll dig into that conversation with you tomorrow night and look and look forward to an open conversation back and forth. So we can learn from that as well as this continues to progress and we continue to learn and grow. So thank you for that. We're really narrowing our focus this year. It's been mentioned many times by several participants this evening around anti-racism, anti-bias training, professional development curriculum and the work in the diversity, equity, inclusion area. And so that first meeting, as Karen mentioned, is happening this week. And that training that's been happening has been so important to us, including working with the experts from NYU. I'd also like to say thanks to the board publicly for engaging in a book study with Debbie Liu and I around Unconscious Bias, a book that the leadership team is reading and working on as well. I think that's such a productive experience for all of us and helps to add to our discussions. Your group that I know we mentioned this during the School Board Appreciation Recognition at the last meeting. But I need to say again, our group of continuous learners that are an example for all of us and understand your role as policymakers can be informed by unconscious bias and understanding that in yourselves, exploring that, understanding that about the organization is a big part of this work from a leadership perspective. So thank you for that. And finally, on the 17th, November 17th, we have our forum that's coming up. The Community Forum at seven o'clock, the board meeting, the regular meeting at five o'clock will include blueprint updates, a safety plan hearing, which is an annual requirement for us to host. And also the financial outlook going into next year, that's at the five o'clock meeting. And the seven o'clock meeting will really just be an open forum for the community. We've done these all different ways over the years in terms of it being wide open or a topic based event. I would expect that I'll give some update on where we're at relative to a virtual learning and people's experiences in the hybrid versus the remote, based on the feedback from the the next few town halls. As I said, on Wednesday and Thursday. So that will probably help us get part of that conversation started off. But other than that, it'll be a really wide open experience. And yes, as Mark mentioned, we're participating as an organization in the 21-day challenge. Again, part of that notion of anti-racism, anti-bias, building our own capacity in the diversity, equity and inclusion area and looking forward to continue to take on that as the primary focus of our work this year. Outside of that primary notion of delivering a quality program in the midst of a pandemic. So thanks to everybody and the opportunity to report out on those, Mark.
I was muted there. Thank you. We appreciate the update. And thank you for the reminder to folks that over the next two days, your town halls with the building principals to be able to gather and listen to parents in each individual building. I think that's a great idea and we look forward to being a part of that also. So thank you. Next up item, agenda item number seven. We have approval, we seek approval tonight for the first read on three new policies. And I'll remind the group that when we last dealt with two first reads, two meetings ago, three meetings ago now, I think, we talked about the need to do some policy update work early in the school year to make sure that we are aligned and have covered all of the situations and circumstances that we find ourselves in right now and to try to sort of accommodate what may occur as we move forward through the school year. And that's what these three first read policies are all about. We're going to talk about it briefly, but I I think the best thing to do, these are first reads. So if approved tonight, they come back for a second read, they stay open for comment from the public, internal comment from any of our folks. So I I'm comfortable asking for a motion to approve first read on all three policies. And then we'll have some discussion if everyone is okay with that. So I seek a motion for approval, first read on those three policies that are listed there, A, B, C.
So moved. I can't.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Christina. And you'll notice that the first one, Policy 3520, it's under Community Relations, Extraordinary Circumstances. And again, these all three are posted. It's a situation that ties our policy work and our actions through any emergency situation. So this is designed for coverage of whatever we have to deal with. And it align, it allows us to align things as we need and as things shift. The second one is a Policy 6570 under personnel that has to do with remote working. And again, you'll see when you look through, when you previously looked through that and read it carefully, that it aligns to where we are and and the other agreements that we have in place with everybody for remote working. And again, it ties to continuing possibility of emergency circumstances or other extraordinary circumstances. And along with the third policy, which is 7150 under students with remote learning. And again, the use of remote learning in the district. And again, same criteria that I mentioned earlier. So does anyone have any question or comment on any of those three policies, the way that they are written currently? Any board members, I mean, at this point? Then if if no further questions, I'll call the question and again, remind folks that it will stay open, come back to us at a later meeting for second read. And it is open for comment from public or internal individuals between now and then also. So all in favor? Any opposed? So we are seven in favor and none opposed, first read of those three individual policies. Next, please, a motion to approve a resolution to adopt LGS-1 Records Retention Schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by, I think, by Larry first on that. And this, again, you have this in your in your one note. New York State has adopted and updated retention and disposition schedule for all New York local government records. So this is a housekeeping issue. We have to update and with it. All boards are required to approve this as their operating procedure going forward. So really not much to discuss on it. It's a technical thing and between Lou and Kim and everybody else involved in records retention, they're taking care of it. So does anyone have any question?
Hold on, Mark, just one second. Where are they stored? Do we just store them, the actual records right at District Office?
They're in Lou's basement. No, I'm sorry.
Yes, right, right, District Office.
Perfect. Thank you.
They are stored in the, and 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 one of the things that we have done, I'm glad you brought that up. When Kim came on board as Board Clerk, District Clerk, one of the things that she undertook was an effort that kind of was ongoing, but really to call out an archives, if you will, of boxes of material. It has got things to a point where I believe everything, paper is binded up. I think virtually almost everything, correct me, Lou or Kevin, but I think we scanned in most things that we need to have scanned in. So that that effort has been over and ongoing over a number of years. And so we're we're in good shape, I believe, on this situation. I don't know if either of you have anything further on that.
All records are in in my office. Some are at the buildings on that. But anything that's permanent records, archives is housed at Central Office or digitized and and permanently backed up.
And as Kim had said to us, I think in an earlier memo, we are complying with this new record standard anyway. But we needed to formally adopt it and make sure it's part of our record going forward. So. Any other questions? Then all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That's seven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number nine, we approve that as part of the same approval that we did on Agenda Item Five and B that has to do with the audited financial statements. Item, Agenda Item Number 10, a motion, please, to approve a tax rate calculation error.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Larry. We have included in the agenda item, the agenda items tonight, the material for this. I will briefly mention that in the calculation of the tax rate for this year that we are in, there was a slight error made with regard to properties in the town of Pittsburgh who are in our district, having to do with a mistaken equalization rate of the town of Pittsburgh. And so we have to correct that error and the corrective action is outlined in the memo to us from Lou through Kevin. And essentially, the the only provision to correct this is will be contained in next year's tax billing. So Brighton residents will see a very, very small reduction because of this. But those Pittsburgh homes will see an increase for this year because they're actually effectively underrepresented, underpaid this year. And they'll have a slight increase on top of next year's assessment. We are going to notify all of those Pittsburgh residences' addresses with separate letters. Am I correct, Lou? Is that what we decided?
That's what I recommend, just to give them an opportunity to to save up and set that money aside. As there'll be an increase in the next year's tax bill.
Yep. And and if I described that correctly. Yep. And and if I described that correctly and appropriately?
Yes.
Okay.
And it. Information if you need it, but you summarized it correctly.
Okay, thank you. And again, we will reach out and and all of those homes will receive a letter. And if anyone has a question, item of interest, Lou will handle that. And again, it was just an error that was made in utilizing the proper equalization rate. And these things can happen and we're upfront about it and transparent about it. It occurred and we're we'll be notifying everyone on that. So.
The very, I would just point, it's a very complicated computation and ends up that way. But also Lou said for people to be able to save up, we do want to give people plenty of notice so they're aware of that. However, I want to make sure people understand it's a relatively small dollar amount. And so I don't want them thinking either that they're getting like a double tax bill next year when we talk about saving up. So it's a.
Good point.
Lou, in terms of order of magnitude, do you have a sense for like a ballpark amount people might see? And it's hard to say because values are so different, but.
Yeah. So the shift in essentially, we overtaxed. If you want me to pull up the PowerPoint, I can just briefly go over it just to show you the magnitude. It's up to you.
Be helpful just to show people so they have a sense of, you don't mind, Mark? I think we should.
No, not at all.
Can you see that? Okay. Is that the presentation?
Yep.
So essentially, what had happened is the, as Mark suggested, is the equalization rate. We missed that as we did the allocation. Pittsburgh dropped from 100% to 95%, which is a pretty significant drop in assessment. For those in the town of Brighton, we went through that over the last couple of years. It was dropping over a number of years, went from 98% to 95% down to 91%. And then there was a townwide reveal. The state and how they look at equalization and the value of the homes in our town of Pittsburgh, Brighton Central Schools, but the town of Pittsburgh, the actual values had caught up and they changed the equalization rate this year. So just to put it in in summary, this is a chart of the computation. So what the Board of Education is responsible for is the tax levy. That doesn't change. But what the equalization rate does then is it it pro rates the amount of levy that's raised for each town. So the top part of this chart is the amount in the computation for how much was raised from the town of Brighton and Pittsburgh. You could see 98.57% versus 1.42%. So Pittsburgh is a very small part of the overall share of the tax levy. When the correction was made and it dropped from 100% to 95%, you could see it's a very small shift in the percentage due. And it results in $40,000 that was essentially overtaxed in the town of Brighton and undertaxed in the town of Pittsburgh. So given the magnitude of the assessed values relative for the relative towns, it's only two cents per thousand in the town of Brighton, but it's a $1.35 in the town of Pittsburgh, which is a little bit more significant. What does that mean for the average homeowner then? Is two cents on there is about $4 for the average home of of 220,000 in the town of Brighton. And it's close to $270 for the town of Pittsburgh. So had that equalization rate have been caught earlier and and computed as part of the tax rate computations back in August, residents in the town of Pittsburgh would have seen a pretty substantial increase relative to what was advertised in the school budget. So that's why we want to provide that information now because it'll be $270 assessed on next year's tax levy in addition to any changes in the levy and resulting tax increases next year. Does that help put it in perspective or relative magnitude?
Yep. Yep. That's good, Lou. And you can see, you can see how how few homes, relatively few homes really we're talking about as a total in Pittsburgh, when you see the the wide discrepancy in percentage of levy on those homes in Pittsburgh and those in Brighton. So so that's that's where it is. And and again, we'll be notifying all those homeowners in the town of Pittsburgh, part of the Brighton School District, so that they're aware. Any further questions of Lou or Kevin on that? Anybody have? And all in favor of that approval, please?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion carries seven yes and zero no. Thank you very much. We also have one bid this evening, motion, please, to approve the bid for cooperative bid for fine paper for the school year.
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Sue. And this is a competitive bid. You'll notice if you look at that, I just want to make sure for board members, it's quite a large number, but that's all Monroe County districts together on one bid. Our amount in Brighton is a not to exceed amount of, I think it's 80, it's $80,000. So that 800 and some thousand or whatever the total bid or 900,000 or whatever it is, is for the entire county as 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 part of the bidding process. So it will likely be less than that. But anyway, it's a not to exceed. And again, part of the cooperative bidding that we do as a group allows us to get the best possible pricing on so many of these commodities that we do. And that's how we all buy. So does anyone have any questions on that? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven in favor and none opposed. And then finally, for the night, our consent agenda, a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Julie, was it?
Andrea.
Andrea, I'm sorry, and seconded by Karen. One, one gift this this evening that we want to make sure we acknowledge, a gift from Mr. Joe Whitey, I believe, I apologize if I hear it wrong, to the Visual and Performing Arts Department of an acoustic guitar with case, two open hole flutes with cases and a Rubank Elementary Method Book. Not being a musician myself, I have no idea all of those things, but we appreciate their gift and they will go to good use with our Brighton students. So thank, we thank them and we appreciate that gift. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's seven in favor and none opposed. Board members, anything else this evening? Dr. McGowan, anything further?
Nope.
He can motion to adjourn to executive session for the board to discuss a matter of specific personnel, employment of specific personnel to the members of the public. We will adjourn from that meeting. We will not come back to Zoom. So and board members, the link is in your one note. So a motion, please, to approve adjournment to executive session. So moved by Larry, seconded by.
Julie.
Julie. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.